Good morning, everyone. We are, at this time, we're going to open up our meeting. It is a special meeting, and it's regarding our superintendent process here. And at this time, I'm going to ask everyone, the meeting is open, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, of all, in equal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We're going to start with our discussion regarding the superintendent's retirement. I'm sure we've all heard that he is going to be retiring at the end of the school year, and so we will discuss matters, and matters only pertaining to the superintendent retirement, that will occur on June 30, 2022. Board, we want to open this up in regards to our search for new superintendent. We really do regret that Wayne Gent is leaving, but we understand that we all must retire at some point. We all must change and do certain things in our lives at different points. And so with that being said, it has been a pleasure, Mr. Gent, to work with you and to continue until your retirement with you. We want to talk about, Board, the different ways that we can go about doing our superintendent search or hiring of our next superintendent. I currently have had two different search, actually three, three different search organizations, superintendent search organizations show their interest in us going that way and the possible retirement, having, the possible search, having them do it. The other thing is that we could certainly come from within our own organization and choose a superintendent that way. But, thank you so much. But we're going to discuss the different options. I did receive a call from Andrea Messina, Andrea, her last name is, what is her last name?
Messina.
Messina, right. And Ms. Messina says that they would have someone come in from the Florida State Board Association to give us an overview of the steps of looking for a new superintendent. She would do, said that they would do it free of charge, and that she would come in and answer any questions that we might have, especially our new board members may have in regards to that issue. We have done a superintendent search before, under, since I've been a part of the board, and I happened to be the chairman at that time, when we voted, we ended up voting yay for Mr. Wayne Gent. So it's my second time around, I guess that's just how the stars go, I'm doing it again, heading up as chairman of the board. But I know that all together, we will be able to make this happen, and we'll be able to make the transfer smooth. But I want the board's input on, how do you think we should do this? What steps you think we should take from here in regards to our searching or getting our new superintendent?
Madam Chairwoman, real quickly, before we go any further, we just had someone sign up to speak. Do you, do we want to have speakers first before the board speaks?
Yes, we will definitely have speakers first before we start discussing.
Okay, so once whoever speaks, then we're going to close the public speaking, then?
Yes, yes, we're going to open it up at this time for public speaking. Anyone that would like to speak, you have to have one of these, one of these speaker request forms filled out, and at this time, we have one speaker, Mr. Christian Baca. Would you please come forward?
Madam Chairman, this is only to discuss the superintendent search, these speakers are.
Not necessarily, but we're not going, we will discuss just the superintendent search. But at this time, we only have one speaker, whatever he wants to say, he can say, he has three minutes to say it.
Thank you, School Board, for the opportunity to speak. This is really will be for the next couple of months, one of the most grueling responsibilities that the School Board will take to lead the school district. And as the chairman of the Youth Advisory Council, my proposal to the School Board is that, in addition, be made to the process that reflects the needs of the students and have the students involved within the superintendent search. And so no matter how that capacity is pursued or executed, I, my only desire is that the School Board include the students in the process, whether it may be including the finalists, the three finalists that the School Board decides, and having an interview with the Youth Advisory Council, and having them speak to the superintendent candidates directly, and have those students answer our proposed questions to the superintendent, so that we may understand their mindset and their goals. So our students, our 41,000 students have a voice within this process, and making sure that they are heard. And my proposal is that the school, you know, outside of what the School Board does and the voting that they do, selecting the next superintendent, that they include the students in this process. I leave that discretion to the School Board and how they intend to pursue that, but that's really just my recommendation as the Youth Advisory Council Chairman. And I have seen the capabilities of our youth. They are honestly the biggest change makers for this district, and I really believe that if we are to act in the best interest of our students, often times, it is allowing those students to speak on behalf of themselves, and allowing them the platform to do so. And so, Mr. Gent, you have done a wonderful job over these seven, past seven years, and your predecessor or your successor will have difficult shoes to fill. And I think that throughout your tenure, you have shown us that students are responsible, and that they are the next generation of our leaders, and really just having a superintendent that is reflective of those needs of our students, and making sure that they are the voice of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baca. We now close that opening, public comments. Okay, at this time, Board, we open it up to any comments that want to come forth.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, you want to go first?
Yes, yes.
Madam Chair, I, I prepared, I, I've been through searches before with other city councils and national high churches, and not to say that you can get somebody well on a search and go out for searches, but they were all a disaster, total disaster. We have someone in-house that's admired by his peers, he knows everything about the school system, he's been here for seven years, he's a professional, and most of all, he's, I trust him, and I think he's, he's the man that should be, should be in that position. And of course, it's been quick, but this has been advertised, it's been in the paper, it's been all advertised that Mr. Gent is leaving, and people have had a chance. I did not get, to be quite frank, I did not get one call or one email either way about anything, not one. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but we have so much on our plate and so many things to do, to talk about. This is one thing that I'd like to get off our plate, and I think it's moving forward. I hope the board, I don't know what you all think about, but I'd like to get it done today. And I'm prepared to make a motion for discussion, for discussion, because I want to hear what the rest of the board thinks, to ask the appropriate staff to enter into negotiations with Mr. Jonathan Prince to succeed Mr. Gent as superintendent of schools with the date appropriate and time of the essence. And other than that, I have nothing to say, other than that, I think he's the most admirable person, and he's going to hit the ground running, we know that. And I'll leave it with that. That's my motion, it's for discussion, though, absolutely.
Okay, we will have a discussion after, different ones make their comments, as you have, so.
I think we need a motion, a second, if maybe there not even be a second, so I don't know.
Madam Chair, you made that motion.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Yes, you would need a second, or the motion dies. If the motion dies, you would just go back to the discussion that you are having, where board members may discuss the item on the agenda, which is discussing the superintendent's retirement.
Thank you, Attorney. Okay, we have a motion out there. Anybody second that motion? If not, then what we will do next is have our discussion, continue our discussion. That motion may come up later as well, but there's no second to it. So at this time, it falls to the floor. Anyone else have any area of discussion?
I'm waiting.
You're waiting, okay. We want to hear from each board member, please.
Okay, I should have just seconded it. I really just wanted to hear what everybody else had to say, I feel like I talk a lot. Dr. Prince came in with Superintendent Gent, and we've been on the rise, we have a phenomenal team in place. I would hate for, hate to see us upset the apple card and go in a direction that would be counterintuitive to what our community needs, counterintuitive to what the kids in St. Lucie County need. I've reached out to the union to make sure that, not precisely saying Dr. Prince, but just making sure that they felt comfortable with reaching out with someone inside of our organization, to make sure that we have continuity, make sure that our teachers are going to be taken care of, and that there's trust. I feel like Dr. Prince has embodied that trust. We're all not perfect, Dr. Ingersoll's not perfect, Jack Kelly's not perfect, Wayne Gent's not perfect, far from it there, buddy. But, but we can strive to be like Mr. Gent and be perfect. And Dr. Prince is like that, and I have full confidence in him. I just wanted to hear how everybody else felt on the process. I've had community members call and say, "Dr. Prince is your man," and I had other community members say, "We should open it up and leave it open for a week just to hear the community's input." But that makes me like, or I don't want to say, it's bad to say, my mind is like 90% made up, so yes, I need to listen to the community input, but I don't think it would really change my decision. But at the same time, the community has to have the opportunity to speak, I feel like. But I definitely don't want to hire a firm. Hughie, Hughie was great, nothing wrong with his, his firm. Andrea's awesome, but I don't see myself spending $25,000 to $85,000 to find the man that's sitting right next to us. Every time we've done a search, we predominantly already knew who was going to be the next superintendent. When, 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 the first time we did the search, we knew right away that Janelle was going to have to step up and be the interim superintendent by looking at the candidates. As soon as we had the next superintendent search, we, we already had that gut feeling Mr. Gent was going to be the next superintendent. So I have that gut feeling, I don't know about the rest of you, that the next superintendent's going to be Dr. Prince, and that's just my strong recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Ms. Hawley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. When we were interviewing and ultimately hired Mr. Gent seven years ago, one of the concerns we brought to him as part of his, our expectations was to build a succession plan, build a legacy, so that we would have internal candidates to look to when the ultimate date came for his retirement. And I, I believe that Mr. Gent has done just that. He also has built a legacy for St. Lucie Public Schools that is unsurpassed in the state of Florida. Anyone you, you speak with looks to St. Lucie County now as a model school district, and I've been here long enough to tell you that that was not always the case. He has built a legacy worth continuing. So, Madam Chair, my, my thought is certainly not to engage someone to do an outside search. I think we have internal candidate, candidates that would be certainly within our realm. I want to continue the culture that has been built here under Mr. Gent, and I'm also familiar enough with other school districts that are in this same process. There's not a lot of candidates out there that would fit the mold that we have now built here in St. Lucie and want to continue. I too have had multiple phone calls and emails from community folks expressing their strong desire that we stay within and not try to bring someone, you know, from the outside to, that perhaps just wants to come and enjoy Florida weather, but to find someone within. And they too have expressed that they feel strongly we have internal candidates that are certainly worth talking with. I, I am very, as, as Mr. Baca mentioned, I do feel like we need to have an opportunity for community input. I mean, today's the first day that we've had an opportunity to talk amongst ourselves, to know what we're, the direction we're going to take. So even if we move to offer the position to someone today, I would like to suggest that we, in this interim time, make multiple attempts to have whomever that candidate may be, I've heard Mr. Dr. Prince mentioned expressly, but not to just slide over and, and not have an opportunity for folks to get to know our internal candidate. So that would be my suggestion, that we certainly look within. I think it's well within the realm of the capabilities of these board members to, to make a good choice. We have watched the evolution under Mr. Gent, his cabinet, his entire cabinet is so phenomenal, the way they work together, the way they keep this district going. And yes, Mr. Gent is the person at the head of it all. He also is the one that creates that culture and that trust that his cabinet now operates under, and has operated under for seven years, so. The joy of watching that, Mr. Gent, has, I really don't know how to put into words, but you certainly have fulfilled every expectation that we asked of you when you came on board in 2015. And I do believe the succession plan that you have worked diligently at is an appropriate one. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley. So, so far, what I've, I've heard and depict is that there's a few people who feel as that, as if Dr. Prince should step up in the shoes of Wayne Gent, but I also heard that we should do our due diligence in having a committee together before we make that decision, in which they, that committee could come back with their suggestions in regards to, I like the internal, myself, I like the internal, taking someone, only those applications of people that have worked closely with Superintendent Gent, and if there is anyone else out there that desires the position that's internal, that we consider that individual as well, and we can come back to what, how we're going to actually map that out.
Could I, I want to clarify, I, it's not my suggestion that we form a committee, but rather we have a forum that the community provide input.
Just open it up to the community.
I don't know that we need to have a committee that would then come back to us. I think the five of us are certainly quite capable of making that decision after hearing from the community.
Okay, so you're talking a forum, okay, thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Hawley. Ms. Jennifer, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yes, I do. I, I, I'm just going to read what I have, because I don't want to, to miss anything. So, "Good morning, fellow school board members. Upon receiving a call from Mr. Gent announcing his retirement, I conducted some research on best practices for superintendent searches and successful hirings. One of the things that I considered was FSBA, as we mentioned, and they conduct superintendent searches, as we have stated already, and they make some key points. To quote the FSBA, 'Finding qualified, suitable candidates for a superintendent position is a tedious, time-consuming, and important task.'" So I think we've kind of cut from the tedious, time-consuming, because we have, you know, somebody in mind right now. "A school board seeking to fill a vacancy must base its decision on appropriate information acquired through careful planning and adherence to the school district's goals. I appreciate that Mr. Gent has given us five months' notice. My study on searches indicates that it is an adequate amount of time for us to refine our school district goals, receive and screen internal and external applicants in an open, transparent process. I truly believe that an open search with community and school board involvement will bring forward a superintendent finalist we can all agree upon, and will help move the school district forward by building public trust. As such, I would request that our school board chairman seek a superintendent search proposal from the FSBA, and then reconvene us in a special meeting to review that proposal. I think that we will all like to see a seamless process that celebrates Mr. Gent's service to the school district while welcoming a new superintendent, be it Dr. Prince, that has the full trust of the school board and community, who can help the school district move forward academically while building community support for our schools." I think it's, it's, it's all about community involvement. I, I was speaking to my daughter the other day, and she said, "Mom, you were elected in this position because people, you, the community trusts your decision," you know, "and that, yes, I would imagine that they do." But at the same token, I think that we should still get the community's input. What is the community's pleasure? At least take that into consideration, even though we have made up our minds what it is we're going to do, at least let them have that voice to be heard, which Mrs. Hawley said in a forum, you know, but I think that we should have some community input, so that we continue to build the trust of our community. And also, you know, there might be other internal candidates who would like to apply, you know, we just don't want to leave them out, and there might be some external candidates. So I think that we should do our due diligence and interview, even though we probably have our minds made up, you never know, our minds can be changed. I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just putting it out there, you know? So this way, at the end of the day, we can say we chose the best candidate for St. Lucie County School Superintendent, and we have no doubt. I wish I could have, would have, should have.
Ms. Richardson, I certainly do like what you're saying and what Ms. Hawley said in regards to at least having a community forum where people can come and speak and say what they, you know, share their, how they feel. I, I don't think we need to have a committee at this time, but I think the next step would be, is to plan a meeting where the community knows anybody that want to come can have their three minutes, you know, to say why they would, what their opinions are, just so that we can be in the community eyes, we can be community-minded, where they feel as if we did not just walk past that, their thoughts and their comments. So we have the time, thank goodness, and it's making us a little busier now as far as meetings, but that would be my suggestion, is that we next have community input, and we, we already have had an expression by several board members, and I'll just be frank and open myself, I've witnessed the work that Dr. Prince have done, and, and he has done a tremendous job in his place as deputy superintendent. I believe that a large part of why we are where we are today is because of Dr. Prince, and he's a genius in his own right. But I do also believe that we need to let the community, because I'm getting a lot of calls from the community as chairman of the board, and, and that is what they want to have, some form of input in what they have to say. So I do think that we, our next step should be getting the community out, whoever comes out, they come out and they say what they want to say, and then we consider, you know, what is being said from the community. I have great faith that there's going to be a lot of, a lot for Dr. Prince, because I have seen him in the community. The community knows him now, and they, they have a certain image of him that's very positive. But just to do due diligence, you know, because it may, something may come up, we may have to do something else, instead of just rushing through it today and making that decision that we need to next have that community forum, as we will call it. Okay? Is there any other suggestions, any more comments that we want to make here, board members?
I, I have, I acquiesce and do whatever the board considers, but I have to give you my opinion, I am, I am disappointed, and I just want to say that, being in public service for many, many years, everyone, Mr. Gent, Mr. Prince, Dr. Wiles, everyone on this board is in constant, we are constantly being reviewed by the public every day. To say we're going to have a, a meeting or have some, have people come and talk about Mr. Prince, or whether we should ask someone else, he's been reviewed every single day by other, other elected officials, the entire public. As I said, this has been out there for two weeks, at least, it's been all, all the papers, am I correct? I'm looking at my media specialist, Lydia, this has been out there everywhere. Everyone knows, I've gotten calls from people, people that I know, just friends of a lot of other things, that knew what was happening. And Mr. Prince has always been in review, I've never heard anyone, and when people do say, "Oh, Jack, I heard that Mr. Gent was leaving, you guys are fine, you have, you have John Prince," and that's all I've heard. And I want to leave this with you, we are right now at the top of our game, what are we, number six or seven, Mr. Gent? We have been going up this way for the last seven years. We have a great team, I, when I, when I met with Mr. Dr. Prince, he told me that he's going to try to keep that same team in line and keep everybody the way it is. When you have something good, when a car's running good, I don't want to work on it and mess it up, I want the car to keep running good. Maybe we can shine it up a little bit, but I'm disappointed, but I will do, I go wherever the board wants, just like the five-year plan, and also, the motion I made was for discussion, and I won't make it again, somebody else is going to have to make that. But you got to remember, that was, the motion was to enter into negotiations for a contract, and Mr. Prince would not have been hired till we had approved that contract. I don't know, maybe he wants $500,000, I don't, he may not get, you know, I don't know. But I, I am disappointed, but I will do whatever, whatever the board considers. I just wish it was done today, and I think the public would like it done. I don't like to spend the public's money on something that's, I've said enough, I, whatever you folks want, I'll back whatever the board wants.
Madam Chair? Mr. Kelly, I certainly hear you and stand in agreement with a lot of it. However, today is the first opportunity we have had to be together as a board for the public to even know what our course was going to be. And I just, my strong feeling is that we need that opportunity for the public not to come and roast Dr. Prince, I mean, it seems obvious from our discussion today that that's the inclination of the board, but not to turn it into that, but rather, an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts. And I think a lot of it will, will be joys, I really do, because I hear those same comments and all, but I, as elected officials, we cannot, we can, but we should not proceed without an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts.
Any more discussion on this?
Yes, ma'am. I really would like to understand what's the next steps?
So far, what I'm hearing is that we would prefer to definitely do internal hiring rather than the search, and it seems like that's a majority of how the board feels. It is extremely expensive to do a search, and I don't, I don't think we feel that, as a whole, that we want to really put that out there when we think we have somebody internal. So my, my next, my suggestion, I guess it would be like a motion to say that we, our next step would be to have that public forum, because I definitely want to give the public that opportunity to say whatever they want to say, you know, and, and that we are open to what we hear, and then to what we hear, and then we make our decision in the final, and, and, you know, whatever we're going to do to make our decision. I also would like to know if there's any other people internally that would like to have, be the next superintendent. I just want to know what's, what's happening with our administration and what they feel as well, so I haven't had a chance to talk to any of the administration, but I'd like to be able to do that as well, just our own investigation of what we're doing here. I think that will show our due diligence to our public. And just as the young man stood up today and had his say in what he was saying this morning, it's important for us to listen and then make our decision. I, I really believe that we're not alone on an island where we make all the decisions and not listen to the public. So my motion would be that, basically, that we will, and if anyone wants to add to that, that we would have our next meeting as a forum to the community and hear what they're saying. I need a, a sec, first, I need a motion and a second. Hmm? Have you made a motion? Say that again.
You can't make a motion.
Okay, well, then let me have a motion from the, from the board. That's what I'm saying, give me a motion and a second.
After this motion, is there room for discussion?
Can't hear you.
Do we have room for discussion? So this motion is just for the forum?
Just for the forum, and yes.
Okay, because I'm still at the next step, but I'll, I'll, I'll second your motion. No, activate the motion. So what was the motion?
The motion.
A forum.
Yes, forum, next, next step. And did you add in that motion, discussion that evening, or just the, just the public speaking?
We could have, I, I think that we, we still need to have discussions. If the, the public is speaking, we still need to have.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, I got it.
I'm sorry. Yeah?
Right, she made a motion. Somebody second it.
The motion on the floor isn't extensive enough for me to offer a second.
Well, I'll expand on it, Ms. Hawley.
I would suggest that at that forum, that we, the agenda show that we have the opportunity to take action.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
There you go.
At the end of that forum, that it not be continued past, I mean, we don't have to, but we have the ability to.
And with that being said, Ms. Jennifer, can you go ahead and make, remake your motion adding that in?
So that's why I want to ask about the discussion, because I need to clarify in my mind's eye that we are not going to have any external hiring, the hiring is going to be, that's the, that's the pleasure of the board, that the hiring is going to be internal.
Is there, is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, there is a motion.
Can I, can I hear it read specifically? I, I need to know what the motion is. I mean, I've heard so much conversation, I'm a little confused now. Because if not, I'll, I'll make a mo-, I'll make a different motion.
Well, wait a minute, because-
Okay, just want to make sure there's a motion on the floor.
We don't want to walk over this motion.
So the motion is to have a forum and with discussion.
And possible action.
And possible action, not affirmative action, but a possible action.
So you're, you're amending that motion to have a, a quorum, a public forum with, with action could be taken at that, after, after that forum?
Yes.
That's what you're amending it to?
He said the same thing, Ms. Jennifer. That's what, yeah, what you just said. Okay, do we have a second on the floor for that?
I apologize, but Ms. Richardson, would you state it so that everyone, I, I know you have, but it's, just so that we're sure, I mean, this is, this is a, a big deal.
It is a big deal, and that's why, you know, I, okay, so the, the motion right now is that we have a forum with discussion and a possible affirmative action.
I want to second that motion. It, it, as long as you amend it and say it will be done in a timely fashion as soon as possible.
Okay. All in favor?
And then we could-
Whoa, 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 we didn't have a discussion.
We would be available to take action.
You want a discussion on that?
Yeah, I need a discussion on it.
You have to discuss the motion.
I mean, because I, I was rolling to make another motion, that's why I was asking, was there a real motion on the floor or not? Because my interpretation is, is that we're going to have a forum of internal candidates and take action afterwards. My motion would have been, if I was able to make a motion, but I wanted to hear what Ms. Richardson said, was we're going to have a forum with the key purpose of having Dr. Prince open to the community to answer questions and to hear any feedback, the direction of, of, of the future of St. Lucie County, and then taking a vote on his employment after that.
Okay.
Because, you know, we opened it up, we're going to have people talking about all sorts of different individuals and, 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 and I don't mind that, but, but mine's more directive, and, and mine's more pinpointing, because I feel like we have to have this somewhat decided by the next school board meeting. And the reason why time is of the essence is because there's a cycle in the school district. February and March, actually, March into April, if people don't feel comfortable where they're at in the leadership positions, what do you think they do? They start applying to other districts, so that by summertime, they're in a new position. Time is of the essence. You may think, "Oh, we got until June," but the reality of it is, is when your leadership doesn't have a captain and they're not sure who's in charge of the ship, you know, that they get a little concerned. I don't mind the motion, but we left it very vague, and that's my concern with that motion on the table.
Well, the, the, the motion is basically to have the community input, you know, and, and it's not-
On, on any candidate.
Yeah, well, on any candidate, if we're going to do what we call internal, we may not have any other candidates internal that want to, you know, go forward with this, but at least we're opening it up to them to come to us and say if they're interested as well. So that's, that's why I'm agreeing with the mo-, the motion that we just, we just did.
Madam Chair, one other point I'd like to make is that, yes, time is of the essence. We, we have five months, but please, everyone realize that Mr. Gent is the superintendent until June 30th, 2022. So while we want to have our succession plan in place, I don't want anyone having the thought that, you know, we know who's in charge through, through June 30th of 2022, and I just, I felt that needed to be stated, despite the fact that this, we do want to proceed and not be bogged down in it. I think it's obvious to the public, and now we all know where we stand, that Dr. Prince is the, the majority of, I just still feel like there needs to be an opportunity before the official contract is offered, that the community can come and share thoughts.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kelly.
Do I have something to say first?
No, go ahead, Ms. Kelly.
Okay, having heard Mr. Ingersoll, Mrs. Richardson, I, I did second your motion, but having heard him speak, that is too vague for me, and the time is of the essence was what I said at the very beginning of the meeting, time is of the essence, state specific, and I don't want to lose a candidate, and like I said, everything's going great, and I'll agree to have the, the forum, but if, if you don't want to, if you would make that motion as, or you want to, because I'm going to withdraw my motion if, if that's the way it's going to stay, I would like the motion to be more specific, as Mr. Ingersoll said that, what the, the meeting would be about the employment of Mr. Prince. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Ingersoll? Okay, and at the end of the meeting, we would decide.
Well, yes, I, I don't know, I, I mean, it depends on what we're talking about. Are we talking about a town hall meeting? Are we talking about a meeting here at the school board where Dr. Prince gets up and gives his resume and takes questions and answers, and then we can vote after here? It just depends on what we're envisioning, and that's why I'm trying to, to flush this out of us, you know, what, are we talking about having a town hall meeting north of town and then south of town, and, you know?
Well, those would be the details. I mean, I would say right here, you know, just make it simple, you know?
Well, that, well, the detail is, is we're going to have a town hall meeting and then vote on it right afterwards.
Well, possible, possibly take action.
Possibly, yes, yes.
Yes. And, and you're, you're adding in Dr. Prince being able to, the public being able to ask him questions, which is different from just having the public make their statements. I've had people that want Dr. Prince, I've had people call me that wants one of the other ones, I mean, I've had other names come at me that are qualified as well and are internal. So again, I want the public to feel like they at least, we are at least hearing what they have to say, and then to make that, at the next meeting, really let it weigh heavy on our making the decision in the next meeting, but at least the public have been able to have the opportunity to come to the special meeting and, and have their say. And we may have to do two minutes per person and change how long, depending on who's here, who may have only anyone here, but at least we've given them that opportunity, as well as anyone else that, I, I would like to know if there's anyone internally that would like to go for the position as well.
Now, Dr. Mills, when you say our next meeting, are you talking about our February 8th meeting?
No, we're going to have, have to have another meeting.
Okay, that's, I, I wasn't, I just wanted to clarify.
I mean, this is work, so we, we have to have another meeting, and we can have that meeting soon.
You could have it next week?
Yeah.
Next week?
Yep.
But I, I'm fine with the, I think we understand, Mrs. Richardson, I, I am withdrawing it only because that is, that is a better, it's the time is of the essence, Dr. Mills, and I think that's, we still have our public input. I don't care if we have to have it all morning long and take lunch and come back and do it in the afternoon, but I'd like to get it done. I'm not, I don't want to lose that candidate, so I, like I said, I'll acquiesce, whatever the board decides on, but that is a good motion, and if you make that motion.
So attorney, I'm, I'm talking to you now because a motion was made, a second was made, we're supposed to do discussion and then do a vote, but Mr. Jack, or Mr. Kelly is saying he wants to, you know, amend it type again.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So there was a motion made. The motion was made by Ms. Richardson to have a forum with discussion and possible action on an appointment at that meeting, and there was a second made by Mr. Kelly, and then there was some board member discussion. During this time, a member of the board may make an amendment to that motion. That amendment could make it more clear, for example, that you would want to have that forum next week. I would recommend giving seven days' notice, since it's not an emergency meeting, you usually have seven days' notice for a meeting, especially since it is for the purpose of public participation, but a member of the board can make an amendment to this motion. That would need a second, then you could have discussion on that and a vote on that. Thank you.
With that being said, Mr. Kelly, you, you want to make your amendment on the mo-
Get it close to her.
With that being said, you want to amend your, your, the-
She can either amend her motion-
She can, or you can.
And I'll support it, or she can not have the motion and he can make his motion.
So would you make it clear what you're asking the amendment to be?
It's, I'll, let, sure, because I'm, I'm not, I'm not on board with the, with what Mr. Ingersoll is asking, I'm not on board with that yet, because like you said, this is our first meeting for this, and I do believe that we should leave it open. I, Mr., Dr. Prince isn't going anywhere, he's right here, so we're not going to lose the candidate. So we, we have time, and I think that we should just leave it open a little while longer, see who comes up to the, the plate, you know, let's do I am all for doing or due diligence. You know, if somebody comes up, I mean, the board has made up its mind already who they want, but at least leave it open for somebody else just in case, you know? So I'm not comfortable with that right now. I, we do have five months, you know, I, I hear what Mr. Ingersoll said about, you know, the transitioning and all of that good stuff, but we have five months, you know, there is no, I don't think that there is a need for us to just rush into things right now. You know, this is our first conversation, we should have some conversations.
And then I will officially withdraw my second. Withdraw my second, I know.
Mr. Ingersoll, was there, what, what was it that, what was it that you didn't agree with, Ms. Richardson, that he said, the part that you said, Mr. Ingersoll?
I, I think what we, the, the, his, Mr. Ingersoll's motion is that pretty much we today would have decided that Dr. Prince is the candidate of choice and that we are going to have this question and answer about, you know, with him, and at the end of that, then, you know, a contract is signed. I think that's my impression of what he, what, what we are saying.
Something like that, yes.
Yeah. And I'm not sure today that we all, I mean, well, maybe we have agreed that Dr. Prince is, but I'm saying that we need to give other people a chance, this is our first meeting.
So, Ms. Hawley, give me a clarification of what your motion would look like.
Well, I think, Madam Chair, and perhaps our attorney can confirm this, but we have a motion on the floor that needs a second, so it either needs to pass or fail, we either need another second, we need to vote on the motion that's on the floor before there's another.
Okay, so let's go ahead, vote on the motion that's on the floor, and that was what Ms. Jennifer said, Mr. Ingersoll said, right? So the motion on the, the motion on the floor is what, Mr. Ingersoll? Because didn't you make the, didn't you make the motion? Who made the motion?
Ms. Richardson made a motion.
And he amended it, right?
No, I, I didn't, I didn't amend it. No, I haven't amended it.
You didn't offer an am-
So alls I know is Mrs. Richardson's motion is on the floor, I'm just wondering, is there still a second?
No, sir, I, I withdrew my second.
Okay, so there's not a second?
All right, so all in favor?
There's no motion.
There's no motion.
So we don't do anything?
No.
Okay, so now we're going to, I want you to, I want to hear from you, Ms. Hawley, in regards to the next step and everything you've heard, make a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I, I think the order would be Mr. Ingersoll, because he had expressed the desire first.
Do you want to make a motion, Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I make a motion that we entertain a forum on about or around January 27th or the 28th, sometime in the evening, to have a forum to interview, have the, have the community have an opportunity to interview Dr. John Prince as the next superintendent of St. Lucie County Schools, with the opportunity to vote on his superintendency no later than February the 8th.
Okay, with someone's second, please.
I can't offer a second on that one, Mr. Troy, Mr. Ingersoll, because you said January 27th through 28th, and that's-
Is today January 27th?
Yes.
See, I, I worked real quick. I almost snuck that one by you guys. That's how quick I am.
Wait, and I didn't want to correct you.
Y'all, y'all sat over there and didn't say a word.
Look at your calendars.
What the heck? Make me look like an idiot.
Troy, I didn't say anything, I told you I was going to be nice.
Okay, okay, February the 3rd, with, with action to take place-
I'm out of town February the 3rd.
February 4th?
I get back on the, yeah, I'm, I'm out of town then too. So it would be for me-
Might I suggest Monday, the 31st?
That's not seven days.
No, no, wait a minute.
It's 72 hours, though, and the-
I don't mind.
The reason I'm saying that is I will be in Tallahassee the 1st through the 5th, representing this board with our legislative body.
And we do February 9th or 10th?
That's after our next regular board meeting.
I know, but, you know, we have to do this the day after our next, basically, board meeting, so if everybody is in place, it's just called work, the 9th or the 10th, just so that we can keep it moving.
I'll be out of town the 9th, but I'll, I'll do the 10th.
You'll be out of town the 9th?
Yes.
Okay, so that doesn't work.
Is the 7th not an option, or even the morning of the 8th?
In a minute.
I'm out of town the 8th, but I'll be back for the board meeting.
What about the 7th?
What, why, why don't we-
Why don't we entertain the 8th before the board meeting, 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock? Move the meeting to 6 o'clock and then vote on Dr. Prince on the 10th.
What was wrong with the first...
The first motion wasn't because it was tomorrow.
She's not in town. Is that the 1st of February is no good?
His first motion was to have it tomorrow, today or tomorrow. Set a date.
We need to set a date is where we're at right now. And you, somebody mentioned the 7th?
I hope Dr. Prince is in town.
Are we all here on the 7th? No, everybody's good with the 7th?
Yeah.
Okay, then we're going to, we need a motion, redo your motion, please, but make it for the 7th.
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion that we...
Dr. Prince, will you be in town? Okay, all right.
I make a motion that on February the 7th, we entertain a forum solely for the purpose of Dr. John Prince as superintendent of St. Lucie County Schools with action to be taken on February the 8th. Is that bad, too?
The only thing about that, you're saying already that we're hiring him, basically. That sounds like that's what you're saying, and then the community is making the input. I don't think the community wants it that way.
Okay, so we'll have a forum on December, or February the 7th with action to take place at a later date?
Possible action to take place that day after the community has spoken. Possible action then.
That's fine.
Okay.
So, possible action after the 7th.
No, at the meeting, on the 7th, we may, go ahead and make our action and say, after we've heard the input from the community, we're going to vote.
Yes, ma'am.
So, to add to the confusion, your motion changed from action at that meeting to after that meeting. Is that what you're doing?
So, the motion now is on the floor. I apologize. We're now making a motion that on February the 7th, we're going to have a forum with Dr. John Prince as superintendent, a possible candidate for superintendent of St. Lucie County Schools on February the 7th at 6 o'clock or whatever time certain with the opportunity to take action afterwards.
So, I have to miss my Boys and Girls Club golf tournament on the 7th? I didn't pay for it yet, so that's okay.
I just tried to lighten it up, guys.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All right, we all like your motion, so motion carries.
I don't think we voted.
I said, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One.
One, okay. Motion carries 4-0.
One.
4-1. Motion carries 4-1.
Madam Chair, so, we are not going to go through any, through a hiring process. We are not going to go through any interviewing.
We might decide to do that on the 7th if the community is looking for someone else, you know?
No, 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 no. I mean, interviewing Dr. Prince.
The 7th, the interview with Dr. Prince?
Are we interviewing Dr. Prince for the position?
We're not so much.
Or we don't have to do that?
The community can ask questions. They want to know more about, you know, questions, or they can make any comments they want to make in regards to how they feel we should be looking, or who we should be looking for. So, just given the opportunity of the community to voice, make their voice heard is basically where we're coming from.
No, but my, I guess my question is still, are we going to have an interviewing process like we did when we hired our attorney with Dr. Prince? Are we going to interview him for the position, or is he just going to walk in?
So, if we were to do that, I believe we should do that even before, like he can come in and speak with each of us, you know, and to be interviewed by each of us, where our own convenient times.
Because I...
Rather than as a whole group, because we're going to come right back on the 7th to do this thing. But we personally, I think should, each of us should talk to Dr. Prince.
I just think that that should be a part of the process, the what next process, because then it really established trust that at least we are doing the due process. We are having an interview process like we interviewed everybody else.
Yes.
You know, I'm just saying, you know, let's follow the motion. Let's do the motion then, you know? I mean, I might be wrong, but I've never gotten a job where I, you know, I just walked into it just because I'm the next person.
Madam Chair, if I might, and I recognize, of course, that, Ms. Richardson, you're new on the board, but personally, I feel like I've been interviewing Dr. Prince for seven years, so I have, you know, in-depth knowledge of it.
Yes, I agree, Ms. Holly.
The two of you don't necessarily, but...
Have an interview with him so that you can get to know this man as well if you need to, okay?
Madam Chair, let me just, can I clarify with our attorney for a second? Molly, the motion that was just made, the way I'm interpreting it is we are going to interview Dr. Prince as our candidate of choice. We can decide that day that we might not want to hire him or go into a contract with him. Then we would go, then it would be the board's choice to go out for a search or do something different. But the motion, I want to understand this clearly, that we are interviewing Dr. Prince as our candidate of choice, and we can either hire him or not hire him after that interview. Am I saying this properly, Troy?
Yes, sir, you are.
Okay.
I do have a question about procedure, though. We say after the forum, but that's an ambiguous term.
Yes.
So, I mean, the forum could last 20 minutes or 15 minutes, and then some community member shows up at 6:30 and says, oh, I wanted to speak. So, is there a time certain or attorney?
It's up to you.
Well, no, I mean, I've already made my motion. It's already been voted on. I mean, this is sort of a done deal. This is formality. The other question is, is we need to have someone put this together for us. Not sure if it's the superintendent or if we could ask our chief PIO lady, Ms. Martin, to get some stuff together. I'm not sure whose responsibility, HR?
We'll work with that later. We'll work out those details to make sure that it's done, and it's done the way that it should be done, Mr. Ingersoll. So, I'll take care of that to make sure we have someone in place to do that. Could be our superintendent, like you said, just to put it together.
But I am concerned about my first question, though.
What's your first question?
Do we have to have a time, not a time certain, but at least a time that we, we just can't say we're having an open meeting and it only lasts, you know, five minutes and then we vote and then, you know, 30 or 40 people show up?
They will have to show up on time and do what we normally do with our procedure for unscheduled speakers. So, they will have to show up on time once, once that we start the meeting, you know, and the time has lapsed for that, like we do. Same thing, we're not going to change that at all. If they want to make their comment, they have to fill out an unscheduled speaker before the deadline.
Just most of our public forums, we've sort of had them just open. We've done a quick presentation.
We're not going to do that this time.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Just want to get that answer from Molly that I asked her. Am I clear on his motion? Am I saying it properly?
Thank you, Chairwoman, members of the board. From what I have written down, Mr. Ingersoll's motion that was voted on and passed 4-1 was that on February 7th, the board will have a meeting at which they have a forum to have a community interview with Dr. Prince, and thereafter, at that meeting, the opportunity to take an action on hiring or not. I did not understand it the way that I heard it to be interpreted as the board interviewing Dr. Prince, but that Dr. Prince would be there. So, certainly, I think with board discussion, you, with the chairman's approval, could ask him questions. Also, my understanding is that since this is being requested by the board, that this would be a special meeting. It would be advertised like it normally is, and that that advertisement of the notice of the special meeting would state the purpose of the meeting as well as a time, so any community members who wanted to attend could attend. And yes, we don't know how long meetings will last, so it would not have an endpoint, just a start point if they want to be there.
And that we may have, we may have an action that will take place. We need to make sure that, you know, the community knows that, so we can do that if that's what we so pleased to do.
But again, to clarify, I'm sorry, to clarify, that would be, if we did take action, would be on contract, and he would not be officially hired until a contract was agreed upon and voted again. Okay, am I, am I saying this clearly?
Thank you, Chairwoman, members of the board. That is correct. If you took an action at that time, it would be directing that you wanted to enter into a contract with him. I would negotiate that contract with him that would be brought back to the board at a meeting for action on that contract. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, yeah, with, in terms of the time, what time is this meeting going to be? Is something, is it to be decided?
I think 6 o'clock is a good time.
I was going to say in the evening, so, yeah.
People can come that might be working and may want to come, so I think 6.
Yes.
I have no problem with you determining the time with Mr. Chen, your chair, so whatever you decide.
Then we decide, okay.
I was a little going to miss my board game.
Thank you so much, board. We will at this time get ready to adjourn our meeting. Oh, do we take a vote? All in favor?
To do what?
We did do that? Okay, meeting adjourned.